Remind you, if you could please silence your electronic devices, that would be appreciated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting for September 20, 2016. I call the order. We'll call Mr. Offeld.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carville?
Here.
Mr. Duchesne?
Here.
Mr. LeBeere?
Here.
And I am here. We have three public hearings we will be holding tonight, so we'll open the first one, Access to Home for Veterans Programs. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Duchesne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
As you know, we discussed particularly last year at the budget session that we would be looking to apply for more grants in the Housing Office and HUD. So this particular one is Authorization for Submission of an Application for Fiscal Year 2016 New York State Access to Home for Veterans Funding. We will be applying to up to $150,000, which we expect would cover about six units. This will provide financial assistance to low and moderate income veterans to make their home accessible for living with a disability. To be used to assist disabled veterans in receiving critical and often essential home repairs and improvements which preserve affordable housing options and allow the veterans to stay in their homes throughout the village. This is a public hearing. We'll open it up to public comment on this particular resolution. Seeing none, trustees, any comments?
We're doing the right thing by going after these programs and the funds available.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Mr. LeBeere, second by Mr. Duchesne. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Some move.
Mr. LeBeere?
Second.
Mr. Offeld? Discussion? Resolution, poll individually. Mr. Offeld?
Aye.
Mr. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. Duchesne?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeere?
Aye.
Because these are public hearings specifically scheduled at times, we're going to skip down the agenda a little bit. So I would, we'll move to number five, approval of minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the September 6, 2016 minutes. Mr. Offeld, second by Mr. Duchesne. Discussion, edits, additions, additions. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of officers. Ms. Sherrill, the treasurer's report.
We have completed year-end closing and have processed monthly journal entries, financial reports, and bank records for June, July, and August of 2016. The first schedule on your report is the final summary of revenue and expense to budget for fiscal year ending May 31, 2016. And the next schedule is year-to-date for our current fiscal year with actual numbers through August of 2016. Year-end projection spreadsheets with actual figures through August have been distributed to the board as well as department managers. The village's annual state report for fiscal year ending May 2016 was electronically filed with the comptroller's office on August 31. The report is available in my office for you to review. Through close of business yesterday, we have collected $5,505,653, which is approximately 90.8 percent of the adjusted tax mora. We're slightly ahead of collections last year where at this point we had collected 90.2 percent. The last day for collection in the village office will be September 30. Our last data transmission to the county will be around October 7. After September 30, residents will need to pay their taxes directly to the county. On September 6, we made a semi-annual interest payment in the amount of $26,606 to USDA Rural Development. This was on our community center bonds. The lease purchase payment for the fire pumper truck was processed in today's warrant. The payment consisted of $38,859 in principal and $10,300 in interest. The New York Retirement System has released rates to utilize in preparing our budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The Employee Retirement System rates have remained unchanged from our current fiscal year. Tier 3 and 4 remain at 16 percent, Tier 5 at 13.1 percent, and Tier 6 at 93 percent. The Police and Fire Retirement System rates went up 0.5 percent for each tier. Tier 2 is at 24.6 percent, Tier 3 24.3 percent, Tier 5 23.4 percent, and Tier 6 14.8 percent. The one action item on today's report. We need to transfer $1,100 to 499-01-900-192-20, which is a transfer to debt service for the wastewater treatment plant. This is to cover the final bond payment for the plant upgrade. We originally budgeted $265,000 for this line item. We needed an additional $1,100 to complete the payment. I would recommend taking the funds out of the contingency account from sewer fund to cover this.
Entertain a motion?
So move.
Mr. Carville?
Second.
Second by Mr. LeBeere. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any questions for Ms. Sherrill? Thank you. Okay, we have a second public hearing. Proposed resolution authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year 2016 New York State Community Development. Block grant, this is for first-time homebuyer assistance up to $400,000 in the area of 10 to 12 units. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Open.
Mr. Carville?
Second.
Second by Mr. LeBeere. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing, opening up to public comment. Trustees, anything from the trustees? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Carville, second by Mr. Duchesne. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Entertaining a motion to adopt the proposed resolution. Mr. Carville, second by Mr. Duchesne. Discussion? Resolution, poll individually. Mr. Offeld? Mr. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. Duchesne?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeere?
Aye.
Resolution carries. About two minutes, so we're going to move on. Committee reports, code enforcement. Mr. Carville, Mr. LeBeere.
We'll be meeting, scheduling meetings soon. We had some thoughts, ideas, and suggestions that have been coming in over time, and we just need to get them all together and see what we're going to move on and what other work needs to be done.
Economic Development, Mr. Offeld, Mr. LeBeere. Fire Committee, Mr. Carville, Mr. LeBeere.
There ought to be an item later on in the agenda, and also we're trying to get together, trying to get everybody's together so we can meet the drivers and volunteers.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Carville, Mr. Duchesne. Police Committee, Mr. Carville, Mr. Duchesne.
Talked with the chief today. There's an item later on in the agenda.
Chief, go ahead. So we'll return back to item four on the agenda. Proposed resolution to authorize submission of an application for funding from Empire State Development Corporation, Restore New York Community Initiatives, Round Four. This is in regards to the former Slavens Building. Get some quick history on this. That business operated or furnished for, as you know, from 1920 to the early 2000s. The village eventually took possession of the building and ordered it demolished. That occurred in 2010. Because a portion of the expansive structure was deemed to be solid and pretty good, as you know, it was kept, and that's the 2 and 4 Water Street, the building that's currently standing there. In May of 2013, the village board entered into an agreement with the Main Street LLC, and for quite some time they've been working on finding tenants. And the key, as you know, redevelopment at is to finding a tenant for the main floor. Their concept is to put residential above and then utilize the basement in some manner. You may recall that Mr. Pease appeared before us back in February 2014, updating to as the status. Since that time, we've stayed in touch with the LLC. There's been some meetings with our strategic development team, trying to take what their concepts were, what they were looking to do with the building, and match those up to grant opportunities. And we think we've found one that's a good fit. So we did the initial application for Restore New York earlier this year, and that application was to give you permission to apply for the full grant, and we obtained that permission. So in other words, what we're looking to do with the building meets the criteria for the grant, so we can go ahead and apply for that. So Mr. Pease is here from the Main Street LLC, and I'd open the floor to him, give him an opportunity to update, if you have any questions of him. Mr. Pease?
Thank you. We've been trying since we entered into the agreement with the village to find a partner, I guess, to work with us to renovate the building. Our primary goal, of course, was to make the renovation of the Slavens Building like the beginning of our resurrection of the downtown area. We entered into an agreement with the village that required us to invest a minimum amount of money. The actual budget for renovations will be almost twice that. It's been difficult to be chicken or the egg. We need a first-floor retail tenant in order to convince a bank to lend us the money that we need to complete the renovation. We need a renovated building to get a first-floor tenant. So we're proud to report, I guess, that we have found a group, an individual, that's willing to work with us, provided that we can make this a deal that makes economic sense. And with the assistance of this grant, it may put together some financials that make sense to complete the renovation of the building. Right now, the architects are giving us a preliminary budget for renovation in the area of $700,000. And it's quite an investment to make in downtown Messina at this time, and we need some support from the grant holders. And I'm here to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Who owns the building right now?
You do.
Did we sell it to somebody for a dollar?
Well, there's a-
How did that shake out?
There is a-
There's a fuzzy there.
There's a purchase offer out there with Downtown Messina LLC, which was an entity created for the purpose of redeveloping the building. It was a dollar transfer with a condition that the LLC invests, I believe it was $450,000 in-
Five hundred. I read it before I came here.
Was it 500? Regardless, it's going to be more than that. And if we failed to do that, took title and failed to do that, we had to pay you the assessed value, I think, $86,000 or something like that. We didn't really care about those numbers because the purpose was to be in a position where we could go out and say, hey, we can control this property if we can find the numbers that make sense to borrow the money and complete the construction. One of the things that we've said to the village ever since then, you know, we're out in the world, we're trying to find somebody to help us make it a reality. If you find somebody, we're out of your way in a heartbeat, okay? Our only purpose is to get that building renovated and start the renovation of the downtown.
And that was the conversation post-February 2014 when Mr. Pease appeared. We got together and essentially, he agreed that if we were to find somebody to take that building, he would step out of the way and allow us to proceed. So it really was mutually beneficial just to continue to work and partnership on it. Any other questions for Mr. Pease? Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Some move.
Mr. LeBeere? Second by Mr. Carville. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public comment? We were just talking about Mr. Pease, now we're opening the public hearing portion of it. No public comment. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Carville, second by Mr. Offeld. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the proposed resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. LeBeere, second by Mr. Carville. Discussion? Resolution, poll individually. Mr. Offeld? Mr. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. Duchesne?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeere?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Back to reports of officers and committees. Recreation Commission, Mr. Duchesne.
Minor hockey registration went good, going good. They've got three new teams on this year. Senior youth soccer season ended short. It was only about one and a half, six weeks, and that's the end of that. It was time to go back to school. Softball playoff season is finished. Am I right, Monique? Softball's all done? Okay, thank you. Nerf War III. Most of us people, Star Wars. That is going good, and they had a big battle on September 10th, and there's 35 kids involved with that. And Mike, the director, recreation director, says it's really good, and the kids are all protected. They got head, and they got helmets, so they're all protected. They had quite a blast. And the Messina Arena Locker Room Project has come along fine, and it should be finished probably by this weekend. They were saying the 25th. And pickleball courts are going good. They're playing that over the alcohol field on Monday nights. Summer recreation is finished. Figure skating reservation, registration is September 21st. What's today? 21st and tomorrow, today, tomorrow. And they got the ice rent for the year, recreation. First day of ice to quit will be October the 10th. This weekend, the model trade and toy show, September 24th, 25th, at the arena. Marquee sign, they've raised enough money for the donations to pay for it. It's costing $10,000 for putting marquee sign up there, which is a long time needed. And that's just about all I got.
Thank you. Street Committee, Mr. Offeld, Mr. LeBeere. Water and Sewer, Mr. Offeld, Mr. LeBeere.
Water and Sewer, there's a claim on the day you own this.
Initial public comment period. As always, we ask you to stand and at least state your name for the record. Initial public comment period.
Doris Robinson. Is there anything being done with that property on Main Street where the fence is, where the building was burnt? Are they doing anything with this?
No, she has a permit. She has a building permit.
What about the other one? Those two pieces of property there?
No. The other property is owned by a deceased individual.
Is owned by?
The owner's passed away, so it's currently in, I guess, the project. Mr. Gray?
Quick question. The action item under the treasurer's report, you traced your money from the contingency, was that the sewer contingency or the general fund?
Sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Further public comment. Moving on to old business. Authorization to rebid the installations, great bone installation of the water treatment plant. Mr. Fay?
Yes, for approval, from the board, last meeting, I went out, developed specifications, sent them out to four different contractors in our area. We only received one bid from an interested party. And although it's within budget, it's, I'm proposing to reject that sole bidder. Hopefully, what I will do is reach out to other territories to hopefully attract some other interest out there and get at least two bids, so we can do some comparisons.
So-
Second.
Mr. LeBeere, Mr. Offeld, discussion?
Yeah, it just makes total sense to have one bid. Yeah, let's see what else is out there, and it might be the one bid that we have is the one we go with. Compare it with Gray.
Do you think that bid's way too high, Host? That's why you made the commitment not to do it?
I can say it's within budget.
It is within budget?
I know in the past, when we've gone out to rebid, we've had success in getting additional bids, and sometimes they're more competitive, so.
That's a good idea. Get it done cheaper. David, it's the name of the game.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Authorization to donate surplus police vehicle to Town and Norfolk Police Department. This was on the agenda at the last meeting, as you know. We received a request from Supervisor Furnace of Norfolk. It's come to my attention that you have a Dodge Charger that is a surplus vehicle that the village of Messina may be interested in getting rid of. The Town Norfolk currently has a 2003 Tahoe being used as a second patrol vehicle, and it is in pretty sad condition. We are in the process of securing funding for a new patrol vehicle. The delivery will not be until mid-year 2017, I would assume. If the village would be interested in letting go of that Charger, it would certainly fill a gap for us and allow my PD a safer vehicle to use in the interim while we await for our new car.
And that answers the question that we had last week. It's not giving it, we're giving them, we're going to loan it to them to get them through a period.
My concern, if we were to loan it, we would keep the title, and my concern would be, do we assume any liability if something were to happen out there? Or the, you know, my experience at the police department, we wholesale these typically to a company down in New Jersey who makes them into cabs. We don't get substantial dollar for them. So do we want the liability for something that, you know, may have a value of, and I'm not by any means an expert in the value of vehicles, but $1,000, say, for example, do we want that kind of liability for something that's $1,000 or $2,000 in value?
There's any way we can sell it to them for a dollar, just so that it's theirs, we've sold it, it releases us of any liability. It's a sale, as is, where is.
It's in our purview to give it to another municipality. I think if we were to ask for money, again, we'd have to convince the attorney, we'd have to bid it out, I would assume.
If we give it to them, does that release us of the liability? We give them complete ownership of it, it's yours, there it is.
We would require them to sign a whole harmless.
See, this is what's crazy about government, you try and do somebody a favor, and yet it's going to cost you a lot of money to do that. It sucks.
Have they indicated what they would do with it once their new vehicle arrives?
No.
When they wholesale and send us a thank you card with $1,000?
That would be the expectation. I just thought we were going to let, get them through a hump, they've got their wheels in motion, so to speak. We're going to get them, get them so that, government's helping governments is a great idea. Saving everybody money. We're not using it. But if it's going to cost us money to do it, I'm not in favor of it. I mean, that's crazy. See what you can find out, if you want to bring something back to the next meeting. If you don't think it's a good idea right now, tell us, and it's done. What do you think, Jim? I mean, you've spoken to Matt, so correct.
I have, and my preference would be that I would like to see us both to do this and move on from it, given what little value is left in this vehicle, and it can accommodate them and make what they're doing in their community safer for the people doing it, and certainly safer for their community because they've got a backup vehicle.
What about the liability aspect? What was his-
I think we no longer have liability if we give it to them and we have them actually get a whole harmless.
I agree.
Hold harmless, would the attorney have to draw it up? So.
It's pretty standard. I mean, we've done them several times, it's a little, anything's a better.
You've had experience with this, so.
We have, yeah. We have.
The thing that would work me is when it's all said and done, if exact good and bad to it, Matt, it's, are we going to get a thank you card with a gift certificate? What's going to happen there? You know, and you can't write that stuff down.
No, I-
You don't know what's going to happen, but, I mean, this is taxpayer money, then we can't just give it away, you know? That's the real hard part here.
One thing, one thing that we got to look at also is if something severe was to happen in Messina, they're going to be our backup. They're going to need to, they'll get to us if they only have one car.
If they're our backup, we're in trouble.
There's a possibility-
I think, you know, I can probably hit a couple better backups than the pitcher would.
And don't get us wrong, I think everyone wants to help them if we can't.
Right. Exactly. No, but I understand your point now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, how did it become a surplus?
Just to clarify, you meant they're distance away, right?
Yes. Yes, the distance.
That's the way I took it, I just wanted to-
Yeah.
How did it become a surplus?
We no longer use it.
I know, but we didn't trade it in towards a new one?
We can't trade in police vehicles under the state contract.
Oh, so if we didn't give it to them, what's going to happen to it?
We would declare it surplus, and most police vehicles, there's two ways we get rid of them. We go through auction, through surplus equipment, through public works, but oftentimes the police vehicles, we market them to a company that's in New Jersey who bids on them and then converts them into cabs. Want more answers, want to take action? What do you want to do, John?
I think they're scared of doing it, the whole darkness pluses. If they're in trouble, I mean, hopefully if we're in trouble, they would come and help us. It's done in other areas, other villages, cities, towns, so they're always helping each other out as far as sharing equipment or whatever needs to be done, and it's just another example of it.
What would you guess the net worth of that vehicle would be?
Not much.
The network of this, I mean, in my experience, if this were-
I may get hold your feet.
Well, keep in mind, this is a Dodge Charger, it's a smaller vehicle than we typically have in the police fleet, and so the value of that being converted to a cab, there may not even be value in it as a cab, so then we'd be talking surplus equipment, cost for a vehicle with 129,000 miles on it? Not very much.
$1,700.
In giving it, can the, could there be an agreement to where, at the point, they no longer need to declare surplus, that either comes back or the proceeds or whatever they do that come back to us, then it negates any taxpayer loss?
I'd vote for them right now if they do that. Don't you, let's wait until next, we're meeting October 4 anyway, right? Yeah, October 4th, so we're fairly late. Two weeks from now.
If you want to put that in the form of motion and we pass it, then I can try to make that happen. If it doesn't, then I'll bring it back to you.
So I move that we give the vehicle to assist the other local government in Norwood. The condition that-
Norfolk.
Norfolk, sorry. Condition that if and when their new vehicle arrives and that vehicle is no longer needed, they will take the same action and either give the vehicle back or proceeds from wholesaling it back to the village of Messina.
So I get that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
See, all that money.
Tell them we're not being cheap, but every dollar counts.
New business, we have a resignation in the fire department. Thomas Blair.
Some move.
Mr. Offeld, second by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Authorized to conduct interviews for firefighter, fire driver.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Offeld, second by Mr. LeBeere. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Authorization to campus one full-time police department, police officer position. Do you want to explain where we are in this?
Sure. Currently, I was informed today, one of our officers is going to be leaving for future employment on or about October 23rd. So I'm just asking permission to canvas. I want to get ahead of the ball and get the interviews done, and hopefully by time that officer leaves, I could have someone else that's going to replace him, eliminate the overtime gap.
This is just canvassing, so should this officer change their mind and not leave? We don't have any.
Some move?
Second.
Second by Mr. Offeld. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Voucher warrants.
I move the voucher signed by trustee Carville and myself to be approved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Some of the reports, some on the table there. Communications correspondent, I have a non. Any further trustees? Closing public comment period. Mr. Gray?
This way, I'm not an attorney, but I haven't had little experience with surplus equipment. I believe if you tran, if you give it and transfer the title, you don't need a whole time with it because it's now a, a part of their property and it's insured. I think if you put in the caveat that they, there may be some return eventually, that still makes you a stakeholder, which I think they, your liability may be...